I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board meeting of August 1st, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM, and ask Clerk Simmsky for roll call.
Mayor Nutter.
Here.
The clerks here: Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker is absent. Trustee Berry.
Here.
Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Attorney Carrara.
Here.
Village Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
[applause] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. It's exciting when you can swear in an officer, a fireman officer. At this point, open forum. Is there anybody here who has an item that's not on the agenda you'd like to address? Seeing none, I'd close open forum and I'd call Chief Riley if he can come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor and pleasure to come before you this evening for this special occasion and swearing in Deputy Chief Kevin O'Hare. Kevin's been a member of the village and the Westmont Fire Department for the past seventeen years. Kevin was last serving as Lieutenant of the Department along with being a Training Officer for the past three and serving as the Mabus Division 10 Chiefs of Training Liaison. For the past seven months, Kevin's been in the interim Deputy Chief, learning my old position, his new position, along with continuing to be involved with the Training Division and mentoring Eric Blaskovich to take over Training. Kevin's been doing an outstanding job in the interim position and will continue to do so as your next full-time Deputy Fire Chief. So, Mayor, if I could ask you and Trustee Guzzo to please come forward to swear in Kevin. Kevin, you can come on up.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kevin O'Hare.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the State of Illinois.
And that of the State of Illinois.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
That I will, with a positive attitude.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Obey and support the rules, regulations, and orders.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
Of the Westmont Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
And that I will faithfully serve the Village of Westmont.
In the discharge of my duties.
In the discharge of my duties.
As a Deputy Fire Chief of the Westmont Fire Department.
As a Deputy Fire Chief of the Westmont Fire Department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Thank you.
Congratulations, Senator.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So, Kevin, who would you like to have pinned you tonight?
Olivia.
It's okay, there's a lot of paramedics. It's okay, there's a lot of paramedics.
Just want to say a couple quick thank yous. Thank you to the Mayor and the Manager and all the trustees for this amazing opportunity. Very excited and looking forward to this new position. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight supporting me. Really appreciate it. Means a lot. It's a little overwhelming how many people came out. Means a lot. Thank you very much. As Chief Riley said, I've been with the department for seventeen years. Twenty years ago this summer, I applied to be a cadet with the Westmont Fire Department. And I came to meet with Chief Trout, and I was just as excited and nervous as I am right now. But Chief Trout was very welcoming and friendly and brought me in with open arms. And that's how my whole experience here has been. Everyone, not just the Fire Department but the whole village, has been very welcoming and has built me up along the way. I'm very appreciative of it. They built me up to get a full-time job shortly after starting here, and I was fortunate enough to have a job with the City of Harvey on the Fire Department there. And I was able to take all the skills and knowledge and practice that everyone had invested in me here and go there, and it really gave me a leg up. And I was appreciative of Harvey, of Westmont, for doing that for me, for Harvey. And I was able to go there and practice and fine-tune all those skills that I had developed here. And so, very fortunate that I had both those experiences. Definitely built me up to where I am today. So, thank you to the Westmont Fire Department, Harvey Fire Department, for building me up where I am today. And then I just want to say thanks to the chiefs that I've had the privilege to work with here. Chief Trout for hiring me and creating that family atmosphere and a fun environment to work in. Very grateful for that. That's definitely what hooked me into the fire service. And then I had the privilege of working with Chief Weiss, who really embodied teaching and mentoring and had a succession plan that put me in the position I am today. I'm very grateful for everything you did and appreciative for what you did for the department. And I will carry that on, the mentoring and building others as I go on, because that's something that's very important to me. And then Chief Riley, thank you. Thank you for believing in me and supporting me through seven months of being the interim. There were days that were really tough, and I'm sure I'm going to have a lot more days that are really tough, but you've been my biggest supporter internally here, and I can't say thank you enough. Thank you for believing me, supporting me, and I look forward to working with you to continue the Westmont Fire Department on this great path that everyone before us has put in motion. And then I just want to end by thanking my wife, Olivia. Without her, without her support and encouragement, I definitely would not be up here today. So, thank you all for your time.
[applause]
And I think at this point, if you'd like to adjourn into the community room, not the unfinished, the community room, now I know there's cake and coffee. So, if everybody would like to do that, then we'll continue with our meeting, unless you all want to stay for the...
[laughing]
They gotta go do work. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
The fellowship and the brotherhood of firemen is tremendous, and you can see that with the fifty different individuals that were here tonight. So, again, congratulations. I'll move on to my report. The first thing I'd like to talk about is the Westmont Post Office will be dedicated to James Robinson on August the 30th. The entire community is invited to join Representative Sean Casey for the dedication to James Robinson, who made the ultimate sacrifice for his country in the Vietnam War and received the Congressional Medal of Honor. And look for more details regarding this event, which will be published soon. I think it'll be in the morning sometime, nine or 10. So, this post office is great to have his name on there. An additional, we had a visit yesterday from college students from Taiwan. We had eight of them that visited Village Hall yesterday. They had a chance to go to Muddy Waters Museum, and it's always a great opportunity for us to meet young individuals from different parts of the world. My last item, and I hopefully get a consensus from the board, I'd like the board, myself, to send a letter of support to Willowbrook's mayor as far as Sterogenics and offer our support. And I know tonight they have a big meeting, so if that's okay with the board, I'll draft a letter and send it on behalf of me and the board.
Absolutely.
And Mayor Trilla, I saw him this morning, and mayors and managers, and I don't know if he lost all that weight because of this, but he's been through a lot.
Mayor, should we send that to, I know Senator Kern's pretty big on this, and County Board is as well, too.
I got it. We should send it to...
Copy it to them?
Yeah, copy it. Thank you. All right, and that's all I have. I'll move on to Clerk Simmsky.
I only have a couple of items. The walking to Hinshu. Participants are now sending in their miles for the month of July. We're more than halfway to our goal, and the program ends October 31st. Secondly, this weekend, August 2nd through the 4th, are the garage sale. Listings are available on the village website, so anybody that's signed up for this, you can find out. We have had some late people come in, but that always happens. So, and that's all I have tonight.
I'm going to jump back like Jim does and wish Jenny a belated happy birthday.
Amen. [applause]
Which was yesterday. And one other item, and I'm sure Trustee Addington will comment on this, is we lost one of our longtime residents, who also worked for the village, designed, helped design this building and the Westmont Center, Bob Gleason. And his services is tomorrow at 2:00, 3:00 to 8:00.
Five to nine.
Five to nine. And the funeral mass would be...
Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
9:30 at Holy Trinity.
Holy Trinity, so...
Bob was instrumental in the referendum for School District 201. I don't know if he ever served on the Village Board or not.
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
And very active at Holy Trinity for a long time.
Yes.
He and Eileen were active in town, and as you said, during the time that Frank Bellerive was mayor, he basically ran the Building Department and did one unbelievably great job. So, last couple of years, he's been in Indianapolis where his kids lived, so he can be with his grandchildren and one of the really good old timers from this town.
His house was often referred to as Village Hall East.
That's true.
Everything had to stop there before it came here, so...
And he'd sit on that porch and...
Don't dare not wave when you went by.
Lot of good memories. And I'll move on to Trustee Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have exciting news from the Rotary Club. They're bringing back what used to be delivered to every household, the Community Calendar. So, we're going to create the annual Community Calendar, and we're going to highlight the WSEC, the Park District, Lions Club, and a lot of our other groups throughout the community. It's going to highlight some of the 201 events. And so, for that, the Rotary Club is looking for sponsorship. There's opportunities for businesses to reach every resident. We plan on getting at least 12,000 and possibly even 13,000 that we've been looking at and have them distributed at the train station and some other areas where we can promote our events outside of the community. So, there'll be a lot of information, and a lot of the Rotarians will be hitting up businesses. And all of the funds from this project that are generated will go completely back to the village through our scholarship program and also our Helping Hands program, which is a District 201 program where we help needy children, and we do that through the social workers at the school. So, 100% of it gets used right to the children. So, great program, and you'll be seeing more and more of that throughout the community. Our Economic Development Meeting, our next one will be September 4th at 9:00 AM at the Village Hall. This is going to be a really important meeting. There will be discussion on economic development of the future marijuana laws coming in. So, there's been a lot of online chatter that we've even talked about it at an earlier meeting. So, now we're going to bring it to the Economic Development Committee and see what their opinions of it are moving forward. Earlier today, we had a ribbon cutting at Right Way 2.0 Blueprint. This was today at 138 North Cass, and thank you to Rick Bailey for hosting the chamber, and we hope him great success at his new Westmont location. And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, I have the Business Community Huddle. All Westmont-based businesses are welcome to attend the Quarterly Business Networking Huddle on Wednesday, August 7th at 7:30 AM at the Westmont Center, and that will be down in the basement. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to jump over here to Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is September 26th at 6:00 PM right here in Village Hall. Is that right, 6:00 PM? That probably, unless it's an off meeting, maybe it's at 4:30, but we'll figure that out. The next item is, last Thursday, we had a pretty exciting week. I'm sure everybody remembers the Cruisin' Night. We had not only Public Works Trucks Night, you can see, which was an awesome event for public works departments who were here. Kids got to go on trucks, take pictures, wear cool Westmont hats. My nephew hasn't took his little hat off yet since Thursday, and no one can take it off him, but it was a lot of fun. And then parlayed with that was also the same night, the Pet Adoption Night, which was pretty cool. We made the front cover, or they made the front cover, of The Suburban Life today, and it goes to show you what the county, a business here in town, Urban Vet, and the village were able to coordinate and get all this to happen together with the County Animal Services van, Urban Vet partnered with it, offered up her facility and services as well, and they got a lot of animals found homes. I don't know the exact number, but I know quite a few did find some homes. So, thanks to all them that put that together. Real good event, always fun. I think this is the third or second year. I can't remember what Larry told me, but we're going to try to keep doing it as often as we can. And the last thing is, I did have, is we're going to have a Public Works groundbreaking ceremony. It's going to be coming up pretty soon, so expect more details as soon as Mike works the kinks out. I know he'll let us know about it, and we'll all have our golden shovels and get out there. But I know we're all looking forward to it. And that is all I have, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. Cruising Nights and Street Fair, we continue to have our cruise nights every Thursday night until the end of August, so please get out there. I know there is an ice cream social tonight at the vet clinic, so hop on down there and see that. There is a .5K event for Ronald McDonald House on August the 24th. Resident Anisha Gavruluk is organizing it, and the proceeds all go to Ronald McDonald House charities. It's very, very important to remember to help those that are in need.
And it's .5?
.5.
Jim?
It's a .5K.
That one I can do, yeah.
Not 5K, .5K. And then Summer Fest softball tournament, August 8th through 11th. The Park District invites any Westmont businesses, residents, or organizations to form a team. Players must have a Westmont affiliation and are allowed to non-Westmont affiliated players. To sign up your team, please contact the Westmont Park District.
That's close to 40 years old, isn't it, Ron?
Sorry?
It started in, with the Park's 25th anniversary. So, it's been quite a while now.
And then lastly, we had an Administration Finance Committee meeting at 4:30 today, and we talked about a few items. One of them was the issues with waste management and having issues and people calling into the village, and we're going to try to fix it so that we can pass those messages along automatically rather than take all the...
Yeah, issues with how to communicate the issues.
Garbage, yeah. Also, we're going to start accepting credit card payments over the phone. We'll have a dedicated phone line that they'll be able to take care of it at a cash register, so no credit card numbers will be written down, which is a plus. And then the Hotel Motel Grant request, there were seven additional ones. We're going to be working with those. And then we also discussed recreational cannabis. So, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And what, did you tell us what's next week? Or is that public safety? I'll leave that for next week and Cruisin' Night. We'll save that for Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Barker is not here. He's out of town, and I'll move on to Trustee Addington.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple more things. Congratulations to another old timer in town. Last, this Saturday, we went to a 90th birthday party for Mrs. Archibald, the Cake Lady. A lot of the old timers in town know her as, she did, I have no idea the number, but thousands and thousands and thousands of cakes over the years for different events and for the villages. I know they had a picture there of a cake, a large sheet cake that she made for the 75th anniversary for the town. So, again, congratulations to her. And lastly, and I mention this every year because we have both the diabetic retinopathy bus coming on August 22nd for Cruisin' Nights and the hearing bus. And they'll be set up at Irving and Cass as we always do. And for those wives who are listening, again, this is a good time to bring your husband, have his hearing tested to find out if he really has a hearing loss or if it's just occupational hearing loss. But they'll be here, they're free, and this is something that our foundation does, Lions of Illinois Foundation with the Westmont Lions Club. So, again, an annual event, and that's on the 22nd. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. And I thought her name was Cake Lady, because that's all it was.
Well, that's what we all called her.
No, I mean, she was known as that. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting is August 15th, 4:30 here at the Village Hall. Everyone is invited to attend. Moving on to the Police Department. First, I want to say again, the Police Department does a great job with Special Olympics. Let's keep supporting Special Olympics. It's a great opportunity to help all of our Special Olympians out. And I'm turning it over to the chief.
Okay, we have two upcoming events that I'd like everyone to know about. First will be on Tuesday, August 6th, between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM at the Police Department. We will have our Open House in conjunction with National Night Out. National Night Out is a, it's a community-based program which builds police community partnerships. We will have a lot of different entities represented at the Police Department, including our Fire Department, our Park District, the Library, People's Resource Center, the YWCA, NAMI of DuPage, Unity Partnership, and Westmont Pharmacy, to name a bunch, but not everybody. So, that was an incomplete list, but we have more. But we'll have the Bounce House, we'll have tours of the police station, hot dogs and chips provided by the Lions Club, and we'll have SWAT trucks and officers to talk to. So, we're looking forward to a great night. The weather looks great, so 5:00 to 8:00 at the police station on this Tuesday, August 6th. The second event that's coming up is our Citizens Police Academy, which is our annual educational piece for the Police Department. It'll be a nine-week program, starting September 25th, and we will cover topics such as traffic stops, SWAT, community policing, crime scene processing, homicide investigation, run, hide, fight, identity theft, and of course, the ever-popular Range Night with role-play scenarios, so you too can act like a police officer for like five minutes. So, we're looking forward to all that. The application is available online. Deputy Chief Steve Thompson is our point of contact at the police station, so you can email him directly, or you can go to the Police Department website link and fill out an application. We're looking for 25 to 30 participants.
And if you've previously taken the class, you can take the class again?
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Because every year it evolves, it gets, we always think that we do it better than the year previous, and we've been doing it, I believe, since 1999, since Chief Mulhern was a rookie officer. She had like 22 years on when I started, but yeah, you can take it again.
I was in the first class. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Then you absolutely should take it again. It has completely changed since class number one.
All right. Any questions?
What happened yesterday here at the train tracks?
I believe a car hit the gate.
But it was...
And the traffic signal.
On the wrong side of the road. It just was amazing to see that. I mean, it was basically...
Chief Riley, you know anything about that?
Was it him driving the car?
I hope not.
He was the next car.
He was the closest witness.
Thank you, manager. Yes, so yesterday I was on my way home.
Does it back up traffic?
And I was on the south side of the tracks going northbound. I was trying to get my new CAD computer going, and I heard a loud bang. I looked up, and the lights were flashing, and then I saw smoke coming out of this car. So, two females going southbound. Obviously, she lost control, the car slammed right into the traffic signal along into the train gate post. Originally, I thought both of them were pinned in, so I requested a pin-in response. I pulled both people out of the car, started working on the one female, but my cohort, Jenny Babiar, was right there to assist me, took a few pictures of it, but I'm happy to say that neither were seriously injured. A lot of damage to the, obviously, train gate post and the light, but they're both good. So, police-fire again worked together. You know, it shut the downtown area down for almost an hour. We had helicopters hovering, but you know, police and fire worked great together. We had electrical issues from the stoplight. You know, those electrical cords were exposed and people stepping on them, so until I could get some help there, it was all hands-on for about four, five minutes.
Good response time for you. Right there.
Were you driving when you were working?
No, sir. I was stopped trying to reboot my computer. I mean, literally, I think we got lucky that, you know, another foot over, she's coming and hitting me head-on. And be, thank God we didn't have a train there, because it could have been a lot worse than it was.
And I would remind everyone that Chief was also first on scene at the Taco Express fire. So, you happen to be in the right time, in the right place, the right time a lot. That's good.
Wait a minute. We've got to talk about this.
Very good.
All right, continuing on with the Fire Department. Fire Truck Night at Cruisin' Nights and Street Fair is next week, August 8th. Come out and see all the fire trucks. The Fire Department will be having a dunk tank this year. This will be your chance to sync the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, and other village staff. So, everyone come on out, enjoy a great evening, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any board member have anything they'd like removed?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
First item this evening, our Village Board Minutes. Board to consider the minutes of the Village Board meeting held July 18, 2019. Finance ordinance number six in the aggregate amount of $1,047,023.94. Next are purchase orders. First purchase order is to...
What were you driving when you were working?
No, sir. I was stopped. I was trying to reboot my computer. I mean, literally.
Jim, is he on the ticket right now?
I mean, literally, I think we got lucky that, you know, another foot over, she's coming and hitting me head-on.
Oh, wow.
And me, thank God we didn't have a train there because it could have been a lot worse than it was, but.
And I would remind everyone that Chief was also first on scene at the Taco Express fire, so you happened to be in the right time, at the right place, the right time a lot. That's good.
Made him. No. We've got to talk about this.
Very good.
All right, continuing on with the Fire Department. Fire Truck Night at Cruising Nights and Street Fair is next week, August 8th. Come out and see all the fire trucks. The Fire Department will be having a dunk tank this year. This will be your chance to sync the Fire Chief, the Police Chief, and other village staff. So, everyone come on out, enjoy a great evening, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on, items to be removed from the consent agenda. Any board member have anything they'd like removed?
No, sir.
Seeing on that, ask manager may to please read.
First item this evening, our Village Board minutes. Board to consider the minutes of the Village Board meeting held July 18, 2019. Finance ordinance number six and the aggregate amount of $1,047,023.94. Next are purchase orders. First purchase order is to Atlas Bobcat, $34,541.50. Represents a purchase of one, it's called a Skid Steer Lager, but we all call them Bobcats. Second purchase order, engineering resource associates, $38,333.84. That represents, this is the, this is engineering services for the work being done on the Westmont side of the Deer Creek Detention Basin in conjunction with, this is the same engineer doing the design work for the Village of Downers Grove in the same area. Next is Sickich LLP, $43,668 for audit services this year. Next is Don Morris Architect, $23,101.85. This is the fees for building and zoning permit reviews and inspections, and then those are all passed through with permit fee charges, or I should say collected. Next is Dumegg, DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group, $175,000. That's the, we'll call the Dumegg pass-through. And that brings the total of purchase orders to $314,645.19. Therefore, the total of purchase orders with finance ordinance number six is $1,361,669.13. We also have one community event on the consent agenda. It is the Westmont Fall Wine Festival. Board to consider an ordinance approving the 2019 Westmont Fall Wine Festival with the following request. First is an amplified sound permit. Second is a partial street closure at 10 West Quincy Street. This occurs on September 14th from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And the third request is a tent permit fee waiver. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little?
Second.
Nero? Made in second to approve as presented. On the question, I do have a comment. I see representatives from the Park District here, and I think their special event request was handled in the community development meeting prior to this. So, it'll be on the agenda in two weeks?
Yes.
Yeah, in two weeks, so.
For approval?
Yes.
In two weeks?
Yes. There wasn't a lot of questions, so.
Oh, there weren't? Okay. Well, we're excited about that.
Yeah. We still got to vote on it, but.
Thanks for coming, though.
Yeah.
The Administration Finance Committee made a recommendation for it.
Yes. Well, what's the event?
The two events, three events.
I don't know. What the heck?
Bob made you come, so come on up.
I don't know all the other events. I'm, I'm here on.
You got to come to the microphone.
Yes, I forgot. So far. Ellis Crampits, Westmont Park District. I do not live in Westmont, sorry. But I'm here on behalf of the Westmont Joyful Voices Group, and they are a group of senior singers who have a show, and they go on the road. A couple of years ago, our former chorus director retired, and so now it's taken us a while to find a new director, but we do have a great guy in place. And the former director did a lot of volunteer work. He donated a lot of his time, a lot of his music. And because of him retiring, our new director, now we have to purchase more music, we have to, you know, pay him a different kind of salary. And then, of course, we want to take this show on the road. So, we do visit retirement villages, including Maze Lake, Coria, and some in the surrounding communities. So, they do a great job, and we're seeking some of your support because we do believe they contribute to the vitality of this community and bring a lot of people in. They do lunch, they come to chorus, and then, of course, entertain the public. So, that's what, we're just looking for some funding for that. I do believe the, the Park District also put in for concerts in the park. I don't know if there's a play with the WPA, the Westmont Group, and wasn't there one more, right? There was another request. I'm not sure what that was, but we did submit those. So, thank you for your consideration.
Why don't you give?
You want Dustin? Dustin is our superintendent of recreation, and he might be able to add to this.
So, the events that we have applied for are the Spring Musical for Westmont Performing Arts, Haunted Forest, the Senior Chorus, and then also our concerts in the park. So, those are the four events that we did apply for.
You need to state your name.
Dustin Cleefish.
She wants to make sure.
Westmont Park District Superintendent.
Relatively new, you've been over a year now, right?
Yeah, yep, yep. Almost 14 months.
And it took you this long to get here?
I know, yeah.
Well, I'll tell you, they're doing a great job, Mr. Mayor. I've attended the concerts in the park. Diane Main Park is absolutely beautiful. I mean, the rain has done it, you know, wonderfully, and the music is great. So, we, we're two-for-two on Diane Main Park, and they were, they've been wonderful, so hats off to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll.
And we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Professional Services Agreement, IO Solutions. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement between the Village of Westmont and IO Solutions for testing services to be used in hiring of deputy fire chief candidates. And I think we discussed this. I'm looking for a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone. Barry?
Second. Nero?
For one, for one meeting.
Till the next meeting?
August 15.
Yeah. I'd ask for a roll.
Just to clarify, if we're having the meeting prior, would it be on the agenda, or would we need to push that forward to the following?
I intend to have it on the Village Board agenda as well. It'll just be generically, you know, hiring the service and then which contractor will come out of the committee. Thank you.
I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business B, Appointment of Special Counsel. Board to consider an ordinance approving the mayor's appointment of Anne Marie Perez of Lamp Law LLC as special legal counsel to represent the village in JRB meetings. And I'd look for Director Parker or Mr. Sylvester.
So, the Joint Review Board meetings are held once a year for our TIF districts. This is something that Anne Marie has done in her capacity with Rathgie Woodward in the past. Now that she's on her own firm, we're looking to hire her for this service as well.
And the whole issue on us getting our own counsel for DUIs is going to be at a future meeting, so we can, I think they're comparing different individuals. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Nero?
Second. Little?
Motion made in second to approve. Additional comments? Seeing on roll call. Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, Police Pension Appointment. Board to consider a motion approving Mayor Gunter's reappointment of Larry Babiar as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Police Pension Fund for a two-year term. Director Parker.
So, the pension board consists of some active members, retired member, and then two members appointed by the mayor. Larry Babiar served in that capacity for a couple of years now, and would like to have him reappointed to the board. He's indicated his willingness to accept that appointment. He's been a great asset to the board. He's got a good understanding of the financial industry, and he's been a great support for the board.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Addington?
Second. Little?
Motion been made in second. Any comments?
Mayor, he's done a great job.
Seeing on roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D, Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. Board to consider a motion confirming the mayor's reappointment to the Westmont Planning and Zoning. This is the specific chair or the?
It is. It was written that way. It is a reappointment also, so the, the chairperson is also a commissioner, and his term is up, but if you want to.
We.
Mr. Mayor, we need to specifically identify.
I'm going. Yeah, that's why I asked him. Doug Carmichael, who has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've selected him to be the chair. And now, if it's approved, we're going to use him, myself, manager, and Director Sylvester to, we need two new members to serve on it. And I've gotten everybody's list of who you recommend, and I'd like him to participate in that. So, I wanted him to be appointed first, and then we're going to start interviewing for the two vacancies. And again, Jan Bartel is going to be leaving the commission. She's having her, I guess, fourth grandchild, and she's needed. So, she's resigned, and then, of course, the death of Greg Pill. So, I need a motion then to approve Doug Carmichael.
Motion. Sorry, I shouldn't interrupt that.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Little. Second. Nero?
Any comments?
I just wanted to add that, you know, just by our own ordinances, it is the mayor's prerogative to appoint all the commissioners. When it comes to the chair, that it's the mayor's appointment with the ratification of the Village Board, and that's what you're doing tonight. And then, in the event that they need to do something temporarily or interim or in absences, the commission itself picks its chair or that substitute rotation.
And have we received resumes? Have we received interest in those seats?
We've received people's names, and we're going to start doing some interviews. Some of them we know, and some of them we don't know as well. We're not going to interview everybody, but we're going to try to select a handful.
There's a healthy list of.
Yeah.
Suggestions from a variety of sources.
And if you, if you know anybody, please suggest it to us. One of the things I started when I had the first vacancy is that I wanted the chair and staff an opportunity to interview and help select those individuals. So, it's worked out real well. I know Doug was one of those we interviewed. Jan was another. So, we're going to do the same process.
Well, Doug's got big shoes to fill, but he, he's a great, great member and great person, so it's.
We, I chose the one I felt would best handle the commission and the public, so. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Anybody other than Trustee Little is going to run out to the street fair? We do not have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved Addington.
Second. Guzzo.
Motion made in second to adjourn. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Anybody other than Trustee Little is going to run out to the street fair? We do not have an executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.